...this evening. We'll go down there. The first presentation is for the Public Works Week. Whereas public works, infrastructure, facilities and services are vital importance to sustainable communities and to the health, safety and well-being of the people of Raymore. And whereas such facilities and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of public work professionals, engineers, managers and employees from the state and local units of government and the private sector are responsible for and must plan, design, build, operate and maintain the transportation, water supply, sewage and refuse disposal systems, public buildings and other structures, facilities essential to serve our citizens. And whereas it is in the public interest for the citizens, civic leaders and children in the United States to gain knowledge of and maintain interest and understand the importance of public work and public works programs in their respective communities. Whereas the year 2015 marks the 55th year, the annual National Public Works Week sponsored by American Public Works Association. Now therefore I, Peter Kirkoof, Mayor of the City of Raymore, do hereby proclaim the week of May 17 through the 23rd, 2015 as National Public Works Week.
(applause).
This is Police Officers Memorial Day. Whereas President John F. Kennedy signed a proclamation in 1962 which designated May 15 as Police Officers Memorial Day and the week that falls as National Police Week. And whereas the celebration of National Police Officers Memorial Week has grown to its current form in which hundreds of thousands of law enforcement officers, survivors and families and supporters participate in events which honor these and have paid the ultimate sacrifice. And whereas the men and women of Raymore Police Department serve, protect the rights and freedoms of our citizens every minute of every day with steadfast dedication. Whereas it is important for the citizens of Raymore to recognize inherent dangers associated with law enforcement and show the gratitude not only during times of adversity but also when difficulty was avoided because a police officer was on the job. Now therefore I, Peter Kirkoof, Mayor of the City of Raymore, do hereby proclaim May 15, 2015 as Police Officers Memorial Day.[184.23][184.23](applause).
Thank you, Mayor, and members of council. It is important to recognize the sacrifice that men and women in law enforcement give every single day that they go to work and strap on the gun and the badge. We've lost 44 officers in the line of duty in the United States already this year. And so it's my honor and privilege to serve with the men and women of the Raymore Police Department as they protect our community. So thank you so much for this recognition.[220.56][220.56](applause).
There are no personal appearances this evening, so we'll move on to staff reports. Mr. Fearborn?
Thank you, Your Honor. I would like to call on Mr. Cattarett to make the report for community development.
Thank you. Two items this evening. First, the next scheduled meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission will be Tuesday, June 2. We have one public hearing scheduled as a request to modify the development standards that are applicable to the Prairie View of the Good Ranch subdivision which is located on the south side of Hughbuck Hill Road, just to the east of Haystack Road. This particular subdivision does have final plan approval, was granted by the city back in 2007 but was never developed. The developer of the land, the Good Otis Partnership, is requesting to keep the zoning as single-family but to modify a few of the development standards that will apply to the subdivision. And that requires a rezoning application. So that is scheduled for June 2. And then the second item to report on is just the status of the sidewalk gap program that's currently underway. This is the sidewalk in undeveloped lots in a few of our subdivisions. That program's about 70 percent complete. And of the lots that have been completed, we have invoiced the property owners. Again, the property owners are responsible for the installation of that sidewalk. And since they didn't do it as required, the city has stepped in and installed that sidewalk. So the invoices have been sent. And for any of those that remain unpaid, we will do a special assessment against the property. We still have about 12 segments left, but we will get those completed by June 18 as scheduled. So that concludes staff report.
Questions of staff? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cattarett. I would call on Ms. Warner to make a report from the City Clerk's office, please.
Thank you. Have your calendars ready. I have several meeting and training opportunities to announce. The first one is the Joint Cities Meeting hosted by Cass County is scheduled for May the 20th. The registration deadline is May the 15th. The MML Westgate Meeting is May the 28th in Kansas City. The registration deadline is the 15th of May as well. The Missouri Municipal League Elected Officials Training Conference is June the 11th and the 12th in Columbia, Missouri. Registration deadline is May 29th. And last, there's a free local elected official training seminar hosted by Laber Municipal Law. And that will be held on June 6. It's a half a day session. It is free to the city as we are members of that entity. Registration deadline for that is May the 29th as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Warner. I would ask that Mr. Crass make a report from Public Works, please.
Thank you, Mr. Fearborn, Mr. Mayor, members of council. First, I'd like to thank you for the proclamation. I will be passing that along to the crew tomorrow. Just wanted to update you on a couple of items. About nine months ago, the engineer, the Public Works Department embarked on the APWA Self-Assessment Accreditation Process. The, this is, fewer than 100 cities across the country have been accredited by the American Public Works Association. The American Public Works, they've developed a management practice manual which is, contains 40 chapters which covers various operations that a public works agency performs. Of those, 29 of those chapters apply to the activities that we do. Within that chapter, they've developed best practices. There are a total of 395 practices that cover the work that we do within the, within operations, engineering and city administration. We, we've been going through the self-assessment process and we've identified 185 of those practices we already had in place. We have 67 practices that we are formalizing. That means we, either we're doing them or fairly close to meeting them, we just hadn't formalized them into a written policy. And then that leaves approximately 143 yet to be, yet to be developed as we work through the various programs. So overall, we are approximately two-thirds of the way through the self-assessment accreditation process. In the near future, I will be recommending to Mr. Fearborn, we bring forward a formal agreement with the American Public Works Association to initiate the accreditation process. Once that is formalized, we have 18 months to complete the process. We anticipate we will, we should be done by the first of next year at the latest. So one, a lot of thanks to my operations maintenance staff that have been working on this, various administration departments, as well as the, my engineering assistant director here that's been working, working very hard on that. As Jim mentioned last week, or at the last meeting, this is the construction season. You've been seeing a lot of contracts coming forward for capital improvements. One of the things that we have, we have underway, this year is, contains probably the largest infrastructure investment the city has made since the 2007 geo-bonds that were passed by the voters. There's significant improvements in Water Street, curb, sanitary. And in an effort to raise awareness, awareness of this, we are installing signs identifying major projects for completion this year. You may have seen some on Lucy Webb Road that say, reimagine Raymore, improvements underway. Right now, we have them out on the Lucy Webb Overlay Project, the major micro-surfacing projects. And in their future, they'll be out on the Adam Street, Johnson Drive Water Maines and Johnson Drive Reconstruction Project. We felt the, you know, you've seen from time to time, progress is promised signs on various projects. And we felt that was a little, little worn out. So with the, with the assistance of Ms. Howe, we developed a message that would, would be kind of approachable, friendly, could be used elsewhere as part of the, some of the other changes and informational things that are going on. And the purpose of the signs is to focus on the end. There's going to be disruption through a lot of these projects, but let's, let's focus on, on the end that we're trying, trying to get through. So those are just some of the things that we have, have going on this spring and summer. And with that, I'm available for any questions you may have.
Questions of staff? Kevin?
Thank you, Ms. Warner. Not so much a question but a comment. And I, I have spoken with Mr. Crass about this. I, when those signs first went up, I got a comment as soon as I walked into work asking me what that new sign was, what that meant. And I was caught off guard. I'm like, gosh, I don't know. I'll make a phone call. And I did. After a couple minutes, I was able to speak with Mike and he was enthusiastically telling me about this and how him and Mrs. Howe worked through this. And I think this is an excellent opportunity, excellent idea and great collaboration. And I extend my congratulations and kudos to you for, for this. This is what me as a council member likes to see. And I don't want to use the word expects, but I, I do expect this because I've always felt that a staff is, has the ability to have these innovations and these ideas. They just need the freedom and the latitude to, to do that. So I, I'm very, very pleased and, and congratulations again and thank you for all your hard work.
Other comments?
Do we do our own work on the traffic signals? Do we contract that out, Mr. Crass?
We do minor maintenance like bulb replacement and, and those type of things. You know, the signal timing, as we discussed, is, is managed by Operation, Operation Greenlight. So we'll replace signal heads, lenses, shields, those type of things.
And thank you. That was the reason I asked on my way in at Johnston Parkway tonight. I noticed the brand-new signal hoods and backgrounds. I know most people don't notice that. But it certainly, the contrast certainly helps you see the aspect when the signal changes. And it just shows that we take good care of our city. I appreciate the work. Thank you, sir.
Any other? Thank you, Mike.
Thank you, Mr. Crass. I would ask that Ms. Howe make a report this evening.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. For the first time in your packet, this week we had our grant monthly report. As you recall, this was one of the items we outlined in our grant procedures that we presented to you all earlier this year. So I'm just going to quickly go over this so you can understand what to expect in these reports moving forward. On the first portion of the first side of the report, you'll see the grants that the city currently has applied for but is waiting for a response on. Right now, we have five grants out, or four grants out now in a variety of public safety, emergency management, recreation trails program. We did hear back about a recycling bin grant that we had applied for and we did not receive it. But as you'll see in the note in the bottom, there were over 1,000 grant applications submitted and only 87 communities were selected. So it would have been a great bonus to our community had we gotten it, but there was certainly a lot of need for, for recycling bins as you can see. On the backside of the report has the information about the grants that we've already received and that we are receiving reimbursements for right now. So just going across, you can see the amount that we have been awarded, the amount that we've expended and the amount of reimbursements that we have received. And that's kind of an ongoing process. But just to provide some transparency and accountability as part of that, we'll include that information as part of your report as well. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have about this.
Questions for staff? Thank you.
Thank you.
Need to apply for a grant for a new microphone, too.[883.32][883.32](laughing). I would, thank you, Ms. Howe. I would ask Chief Zimmerman to please make a report from the PD.
Thank you, Chief. Mr. Fearborn asked me to come before you all tonight to give you some information about a couple of items, not the least of which was a strong-arm robbery that we had in the parking lot of the Price Chopper today. There has been some information out on Facebook, but because we had elicited the assistance of KNBC, the, the Channel 9 Crime Stoppers, to put a report out about this, we wanted to make sure that we gave you a timely update on the information. As I mentioned, it was in the lot of the Price Chopper at about 11:20 hours today. And two suspects actually knocked the female victim down and took a bag from her as she was crossing the parking lot from her car to go into the Price Chopper. We're hoping that that information to black males who were in a white vehicle, we believe a Chrysler 200, for all of those folks that are watching the council meeting tonight. If there's any information, please, please report that to the, the police department. We're looking for any and all leads as the investigation on that is ongoing. So if anybody has any questions about that, I appreciate the opportunity to kind of bring everybody up to date on what's going on. And as I said, that should have been on Channel 9 tonight at about 5:10, so. Also, at each one of your places, you have some information there about the shred event that we're going to be having this weekend. We had one last fall and the weather did not cooperate for that one, so I'm certainly hoping that the weather cooperates for the one this weekend. And we'll be out there from 10 to 2. Police officers making sure that you can bring your old bank statements, check stubs, all of those things that you want shredded securely. And we'll be doing that here in the front lot here at City Hall. So this Saturday, be sure and bring your important documents if you want to have them shredded. And that's for Raymore residents, right here in the parking lot of City Hall. Anybody have any questions about that? Okay. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Just one last thing. The work session for next Monday night, we currently have two items on. The council will remember that last Monday night, we discussed a possible future bond issue, no tax increase bond issue. And we still have some items to discuss relative to that, specifically thumbs up, thumbs down, possible dates. We will be providing the council with, you had asked for, the percentage necessary for a passing vote and the different dates in each of the years that a no tax increase bond issue could come before the voters. And we will also, we are complete, just wrapping up Cass County and Jackson County survey of neighboring communities and neighboring political subdivisions that could be possibly going for bond issues that will factor into, for instance, the school district is at some point going to be going for a bond issue. We know that. Do we want to be in conflict with somebody else going for it? Do we want to stand alone? All of that will come into play during that discussion. We will also have a curb program update and some information for the city council as we move forward with the curb program that you have on tonight's agenda, as well as you will remember from one of our past work sessions, that we are beginning the process this year, the reeval, the every three-year reevaluation of the program process. Mr. Crass already has some, some early information that we'd like to discuss with the council and go. Those are the items for the work session. That concludes all staff reports. We entertain any questions from the council.
Questions of staff? Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Move on. There are no committee reports, so I'll entertain a motion to dispose of consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve our consent agenda to include items A, city council minutes for April 27th, B, the appointment of Jim Heath to the park board, C, reappointment of Eric Eastwood to the park board, D, reappointment of Michelle Seemers to the park board, E, adopt a street, F, pay and acceptance of the recreation park baseball field renovation.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move that item B, appointment of Jim Heath to the park board, be removed and considered as a separate item.
Okay. Item B is removed, so we're just items A through...
A through F.
Through F.
A through F.
Excluding item B. Is there any other discussion? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. Consider item B separately. Go ahead.
Yes, sir. I'd just like to have a few minutes to talk about Mr. Heath. Recently met him and had a lengthy conversation with Mr. Heath. I really feel like that he is a, one of the most passionate and concerned individuals I've met within the city. I think it's going to be a great pleasure and a benefit for the city to have him on our parks board. He's got a variety of background and experience that I think is going to benefit us greatly. I just wanted to be able to have the opportunity to let everybody know about that. And he is in the audience tonight as well.
Mr. Mayor, I moved we approve Resolution 1520, appointment for park board, Mr. Heath.
I'll second the motion.
There is a motion and a second to approve Resolution 1520, appointment of Mr. Heath to the park board. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. Move on to unfinished business, second readings. We have the second reading of Bill 3065 by title only.
The second reading of Bill 3065 by title only. An ordinance of the City of Raymore, Missouri, authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with Hedinger Excavating for the Johnston Drive Waterline Project, City Project Number 15-214-201, in the amount of $259,385, and authorizing the city manager to approve change orders within established budget constraints.
Is there a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we, move that we approve Bill 3065 for the Johnston County, Johnston Drive Waterline.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve, the second reading of Bill 3065. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. We have the second reading of Bill 3066 by title only, please.
The second reading of Bill 3066 by title only. An ordinance of the City of Raymore, Missouri, authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with Bright Construction LLC for the sanitary sewer rehabilitation project, City Project Number 15-208-202, in the amount of $70,623, and authorizing the city manager to approve change orders within established budget constraints.
Do we have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve Bill 3066 for the sanitary sewer rehabilitation.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve the second reading of Bill 3066. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. The reading of Bill 3068 by title only, please.
The second reading of Bill 3068 by title only. An ordinance of the City of Raymore, Missouri, authorizing the mayor to enter into a cooperative agreement with Mid-America Regional Council for funding operations of Operation Greenlight Traffic Control System in the amount of $9,600.
Is there a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve Bill 3068 for the Operation Greenlight Project.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve the second reading of Bill 3068. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. The second reading of Bill 3067 by title only, please.
The second reading of Bill 3067 by title only. An ordinance of the City of Raymore, Missouri, authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with West Lane Construction for the Adam Street Water Main Project, City Project Number 15-213-201, in the amount of $119,955, and authorizing the city manager to approve change orders within established budget constraints.
Is there a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve Bill 3067 for the Adam Street Water Main.
Second.
There is a motion and a second to approve the second reading of Bill 3067. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. That takes us on to new business. The first item is a liquor license, which is, requires a public hearing. So the public hearing. Asking for a staff report.
Thank you, sir. I'll call on Ms. Warner.
Thank you. Mayor and council, applications for the renewal of liquor licenses are required to be filed with the city clerk on or before May 1st, as provided for in City Code Section 600.050E. The following applications were advertised for this public hearing pertaining to the 2015-2016 liquor license year. Affordable Elegance, Butchers Inn, Casey's General Store, two locations, Cheap Smokes and Liquor, Creekmore Property Owners, CVS, Dollar General Store, Eldorado 3, Fraternal Order of Eagles, Harmon Convenience Store, Minsky's Pizza, Pizza Hut, Price Chopper, Rush Hour, Sam's Club, Walgreens and Walmart. I do want to advise the council that applications were not filed from Freedom Stop Convenience Store nor for Freedom Stop Restaurant. Staff requests that these two licenses be removed from the public hearing and the motion to approve the liquor licenses as a group. The remaining businesses filing applications for renewal of their applicant, of their liquor license have met the city code requirements. Approval by a majority of the city council is required. Approval to obtain a license from the City of Raymore is contingent on approval and issuance of the state liquor license. Applicants representing the businesses are in attendance. Should council have any questions, staff recommends approval of the liquor licenses with the two exceptions. I should answer if you have any. Thank you.
As I noted, this, there is a public hearing, so open the floor to the public if you'd like to come forward and talk. Identify yourself for the record and keep your comments down to five minutes. Seeing nobody come forward, I'll close the public hearing and I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the liquor license renewals for the applications filed for the 2015-16 liquor license renewals as identified in our minutes to exclude Freedom Stop Convenience Store and Freedom Stop Restaurant.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve liquor license renewals. Is there any discussion?
I just want to take a minute to thank all the business owners who came out tonight. We appreciate you being here and your participation in the system, though it may seem cumbersome every year.[1623.48][1623.48](laughing) So thanks for being here.
Any other comments? There's a motion and a second. All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. We have the reading of Resolution 1527.
The reading of Resolution 15-27 by title only. A resolution of the City of Raymore, Missouri, authorizing the Festival in the Park Committee to serve alcohol in a designated area in Memorial Park during the 2015 festival event.
Staff report?
Thank you, sir. I'll call on Mr. Mustine.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council. This is a resolution to, for the, sorry, I don't mean to have feedback there. For the Festival in the Park Committee to serve alcohol in the, at their event on September 25th and 26th. There is no changes in last year's agreement with this. The festival has met all the necessary requirements to apply. And upon your approval tonight, we'll see the city clerk to finish out those requirements to do this. Any questions?
Questions of staff?
Yes, sir.
I know we've done this for a couple of years, and I know you just came back to us recently. Did we do some changes with this historically? Did we change a little bit over the years? It seems like there was a little bit of operational change.
Yes, sir. Prior to, before I left, the Beer Garden itself was an enclosed area. And the change that's been made is now that those folks that participate in this purchase a band and are free to walk within the, the area of the festival itself.
Thank you.
Other questions? Thank you. I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, point of order. Mr. Willarth, it's my memory that on a previous instance, this involved a public hearing to conduct this. Is, am I thinking incorrectly? Is this application requiring a public hearing?
I do not recall the public hearing requirement. Mr. Morehead, I'm not saying you're wrong, but I do not recall it. I do recall extensive discussion before that this is a unique event of public importance to the city is why this event gets this special treatment within the park and has that. But I'll defer to Mr. Fearborn if you know or can recall, or anyone else has been around.[1782.74][1782.74](laughing).
Well, and I will qualify my, my question with, I, I may be thinking of when we were addressing the alcohol in the park policy. And so I, I welcome any correction there, but I could have sworn this happened like a year ago.
In checking last year's application, and admittedly, alls I did was look at the agenda. There was no public hearing behind the notice. Now, what staff will do is we will go back and we will check the wording of the code, but last year it was not a public hearing.
Mr. Mayor, in that case, I would move that we adopt Resolution 1527, the application for alcohol in the parks permit for the Raymore Festival in the Park.
Second.
There is a motion and a second to approve Resolution 1527. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. We have the reading of Resolution 1528 by title only.
The reading of Resolution 15-28 by title only. A resolution of the City of Raymore, Missouri, approving the memorandum of understanding between the City of Raymore and the Festival in the Park, Inc. Committee for the 2015 Festival in the Park Event.
Staff report.
Thank you, sir. I'll call on Mr. Mustine.
Thank you, sir. Again, this is Festival in the Park. This is the memorandum of understanding between the group and the city itself, and this outlines the nature in which this event is held within the park. There are no changes in last year's, in comparison to last year's event, and so this allows them to proceed with their event upon your approval.
Questions of staff? Please, go ahead.
Mr. Mustine, I apologize. I should have finished my thought earlier, but since it's a related topic, the reason I brought that up was, the reason that Parks Board decided to loosen some of the restrictions was two reasons. One, because of the success of the festival, and two, because we've experienced no problems with that policy as well in the past. Is that a correct statement?
Yes, sir, that is correct.
That's just what I wanted to point out. Thank you.
Other questions? Thank you. Is there a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt Resolution 15-28, Raymore Festival in the Park Memorandum of Understanding.
Second.
There is a motion and a second to approve Resolution 1528. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. We have the first, the reading of Resolution 1523 by title only, please.
The reading of Resolution 15-23 by title only. A resolution of the City of Raymore, Missouri, accepting the right-of-way for Remington Plaza.
Staff report.
Thank you, sir. I will, at long last on this topic, call on Mr. Catterett.
Thank you. At a previous work session, city council discussed the status of a north-south road segment. It's located between Orshlin Farm and Home and McDonald's Restaurant. This road is designated as a private drive. It was originally constructed as a truck entrance for the Sun Fresh Grocery Store. Later, that private drive, that became the access road for McDonald's Restaurant. The private drive was never dedicated to the city. It remains under the ownership shared between the original Remington subdivision developer and a small portion of it is under the ownership of the Orshlin site. The private drive's heavily traveled. It does function largely as a public street, and this drive provides access not only to Orshlin's and McDonald's, but also to a number of businesses on the public portion of Remington Plaza, which is an east-west roadway to the north of McDonald's. And that public roadway connects to this private drive that we're talking about. The condition of the private drive has been deteriorating, and the drive is in need of repairs. When discussing the issue with the two separate property owners, it became clear to city staff that the property owners were unaware that the private drive had never been dedicated to the city and were both under the impression that it was a public, public street. They initially constructed the driveway, and it was actually widened when the Walgreens restaurant, Walgreens store came in, came into the city. They made some improvements to the west side of that roadway, but the maintenance of the roadway, what little there's been done, has been done by the city. Staff did request from the two property owners warranty deeds that would transfer the ownership of the land to the city. That would then allow the dedication of that land to the city. If city council accepts the dedication of that right-of-way, it would be the intent of the city staff to record the deeds and then millen overlay that roadway sometime this year and place a road signage that signifies it as a city public street. So, staff does recommend approval of Resolution 1523, accepting the dedication of the right-of-way for Remington Plaza.
Thank you. Questions of staff? Mr. Stevens.
Will you name the street now? I don't think I have the name right now.
Suppose we could. At this point, when we initially posted the private street sign, we called it Remington Plaza because it was a way of getting individuals back to the public street.
Mr. Kellerman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And that was going to be my question, too. The follow-up question, is there any businesses or homes on that that use that as an address now?
Not the private street portion. The current public street portion of Remington Plaza, like where Coldwell Bakers and others are, yes, they utilize Remington Plaza as an address. McDonald's, Orshlin's, and Walgreens utilize Foxwood Drive.
Well, I agree with Mr. Stevens. I think it's a legitimate and serious question. You know, I mean, it could have ramifications all the way to Google map search, so, you know. I appreciate staff keeping heads up on that.
Other questions of staff? Thank you. I'll entertain a motion. Please.
In anticipation of what we thought was going to be the follow-up question on that one, Mr. Crass is prepared to speak to the council about next steps regarding this besides the naming, if the council would indulge him to make a very quick report.
Do you need a point of order for that?
If we could just call on Mr. Crass.
Mr. Crass, will you do that?
Thank you, Mr. Crass.
Sure. Not that I'm lobbying or anything, but subject to a favorable consideration of Bill 3069, the work associated with the millen overlay of Remington Plaza was included in that joint, in the joint bid work that was bid with Belton. So, we would anticipate that occurring later, later this summer.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to dispose of Resolution 1523.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt Resolution 15-23 for the dedication of the Remington Plaza right-of-way.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve Resolution 1523. Is there any discussion? Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This one seems pretty simple probably to most people in the audience. It's, as Mr. Crass said, and Mr. Catterett said, it's functioned as a public street, and the only way that you knew any difference was the color of the street sign was brown instead of green. What you will notice in the future, once all the paperwork's done, after we vote on it, assuming affirmative, will be Mr. Crass and his forces will get a lot more work, and they'll have to go in and repair that. So, you won't have to do what I do every time I pull out of McDonald's onto that drive and use the movie line, "Hang on, kids, it's going to get bumpy through here." So, it's going to be a benefit to all those of you that use that street to go to McDonald's, Orshlin's, Walgreens. It's a simple action, if you will, as far as our part. It transfers the ball to Mr. Crass, and he's got several hundred yards to run with it, and I appreciate it. I appreciate the landowners submitting the warranty deeds for us as well and their cooperation in this project. It's a good one for the city. Thank you.
Okay, there is a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. We have the first reading of Bill 3064 by title only, please.
The first reading of Bill 3064 by title only. In ordinance of the City of Raymore, Missouri, authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with Terry Snelling Construction, Inc. for the 2015 curb replacement project, City Project Number 15-216-201, in the amount of $440,500, and authorizing the city manager to approve change orders within established budget constraints.
Staff report.
Thank you, sir. I'll call on Mr. Crass.
Thank you, Mr. Fearborn, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Council recently reaffirmed this year's curb replacement work areas, and upon that action, city staff prepared formal bid documents and procured bids for that project. The low bid was submitted by Terry Snelling Construction, and we do recommend award of the contract to them. Also, at your seat, I think of all the programs we work on between snow removal and curb, I'm not sure which one generates more complaints, but what we are attempting to do is get some better information out to the, to the resident, either residents in the work areas or the residents that are inquiring about projects. And what you have at your desk is a little handout that, again, has been developed with Ms. Houck's assistance, kind of identifying the magnitude of the problem and the resources that we have available and some other general information about our curb program. We are also going to be beefing up the, the information that is on the city's website, and then, as Mr. Fearborn discussed, we do, there are, we have a few other things we would like to run past the council at work session to discuss, some modifications to the, to the, to the program that we will hope provide a little better service to our residents.
Questions of staff? Thank you. I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve Bill 3064 regarding the 2015 curb replacement.
Second.
There is a motion and a second to approve Bill 3064. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. We have the reading of Bill 3070 by title only, please.
The first reading of Bill 3070 by title only. In ordinance of the City of Raymore, Missouri, authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with HDR Engineering for the Foxwood Springs Water Tower Rehabilitation Project, City Project Number 15-217-301, in the amount of $54,333, and authorizing the city manager to approve change orders within established budget constraints.
Staff report.
Thank you, sir. I'll call on Mr. Crass.
Thank you, Mr. Fearborn, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. In 2009, Larkin Engineering performed a detailed inspection of our two water storage facilities, that being the ground storage reservoir at Kentucky and 155th Street and the Foxwood Springs Water Tower. The results of their investigation indicated that the Kentucky Road Reservoir was in need of immediate repairs, and that work was completed. It was felt that the work on the Foxwood Springs Water Tower could be delayed for several years. We did have the, the reservoir, the tower inspected by divers this spring or late fall. They did indicate that the work, it's appropriate to have the work done at this time. What this project involves is some repairs, some updating of some of the safety things such as railings on the tower, and then a complete painting of the interior and exterior. Staff does not have the expertise to do the specifications nor the inspections of the painting, and so we do recommend award of the contract to HDR Engineering.
Questions of staff? I've got a quick question. Does this require complete draining of the water tower?
Yes, it does, but with the, we, it will be done, the work is, by the time we get it all designed, it'll be done early spring of next year, which is a period of time with low water demands and with the, between the, the 2 million gallons of elevated storage capacity that we have with Kansas City at J. Highway in Huback, as well as coordinating with them to, you know, increase, increase demand as, you know, supply, there is no real issue with taking that water tower out of service.
I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve Bill 3070, Foxwood Springs Water Tower Rehabilitation.
Second.
There is a motion and a second to approve Bill 3070. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. We have a reading of Bill 3069 by title only, please.
The first reading of Bill 3069 by title only. In ordinance of the City of Raymore, Missouri, authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with Superior Bowen Asphalt Company, LLC, for the joint bid street preservation project in the amount of $329,792.50, and authorizing the city manager to approve change orders within established budget constraints.
Staff report, please.
Thank you, sir. I'll call on Mr. Crass.
Thank you, Mr. Fearborn, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Council recently approved a cooperative agreement between the cities of Peculiar, Pleasant Hill, Belton, and Raymore for a joint bidding of some, of our street maintenance projects this year. Under the terms of the agreement, the city of Belton was responsible for soliciting bids and awarding the contract on behalf of the group of cities. On April 28th, the City of Belton did so with the concurrence of the representatives of the various member cities. The cooperative agreement and the contract documents call for the individual cities to contract directly with Superior Bowen, the low bidder. Staff is bringing forward Bill 3069, which awards a contract with Superior Bowen and recommends approval.
Questions of staff? Thank you. I'll entertain a motion to dispose of Bill 3069.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve Bill 3069 for the joint bid street preservation.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve Bill 3069. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. That was it for new business. I'll open the floor to public comments. If you have a comment you'd like to make, identify yourself for the record, and keep your comments under five minutes. Seeing nobody come forward, I'll close the public comment, and I'll move on to mayor/council communication using my handy-dandy list of random council members. Councilmember Del Gwad.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll start by thanking Ms. Seamers and Mr. Eastwood for agreeing to serve another term on the Park Board. We appreciate them donating their time, and also to welcome Mr. Heath, our newest member, to the Park Board. I will also say I love the Reimagine Raymore signs. I see those on my way to work every morning, and then the first time I saw it, I thought, oh, where'd that come from? But it's, it's kind of nice to point out to people what we're spending our money on, the things that we're getting done in the city for them. So, thanks for doing that. I think it's a great idea. Hopefully, the citizens of Raymore will see that and appreciate it, too. Next, just a quick shout-out to our Public Works Department for their special recognition this week. I hope we're doing something special for our staff there this week, and just a reminder to everyone in the city that we really need to be thankful for the work that they do for us on a daily basis. And last but not least, of course, in my heart, police officers Memorial Day is this week, and so, as Chief Zimmerman said, be sure you take some time this week to think about the service that our police officers do in our city and around our country to protect our safety. I know lately it seems like they're not getting a whole lot of recognition for putting their life on the line every day, and so, this week especially, just take a minute and think about what it might be like to put on a bulletproof vest and a badge and a gun and go out and risk your life for others that may or may not appreciate you on a daily basis. So, take a minute and think about our public works and our police officers this week.
Housemember Burke.
Just have a couple of things. I did like the signs, the Reimagine Raymore. I noticed that the signs match the color palette that we're using on our website, and I thought that was good to tie those together to let people know, hey, we're doing a lot of things here on the website, we're doing it here in the city, we're doing it in this place. So, I noticed, I noticed that, and that was, that was well done. And then also, I wanted to personally thank Jim Heath. He's coached my children before. He's coached a lot of children, children that I've worked with in Cub Scouting, and I know, I know him and know his wife, and he's definitely got a good reputation. He'll be a great addition. Thank you.
Councilmember Stevens.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just one thing here. Only four pages of the packet shows up on my screen. Could you have somebody check that out later? Thanks.
Councilmember Barber.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wanted to thank Mr. Heath for volunteering to be on the Park Board. I first met him through the Watchdog Program. Thought I'd give a plug for you, for the Watchdog. The year I met him, I think he served like 18 days at Watchdog, so we got to see him quite a bit at Creekmore Elementary, and he also coached my daughter, which attests to his patience. So, again, thank you, Mr. Heath.
Councilmember Holman.
Thank you, sir. A few items to Mr. Fearborn and Ms. Houck. You may want to put that grant in for two microphones with the trouble that Mr. Mustine had tonight. I want to echo pretty much everybody else's comments. Worked with Eric Eastwood, and I appreciate him and Michelle volunteering to serve another term, and again, I've already talked about Jim. I appreciate his volunteering. I'm going to steal a little bit of Derek's thunder. I don't know if he was going to use this or not, but it becomes difficult at times to find people to volunteer their busy time for the city boards, and we appreciate that of all of our people on the boards, and especially you, Jim. Thank you very much. Again, you are going to be an excellent addition. Nathan, I would suggest you find out about his background. He's got some really interesting things. He may be able to help us reduce some vandalism in the park and some other things like that. It's pretty amazing. I was in awe. We had some students in attendance tonight. I think we've still got a few left. The other ones ducked out. I think they thought the meeting was going to go a little long. I always like to recognize them, so thank you for being here. I hope your school project goes well. I'll echo everybody's comments on the signs. I thought the, it was very eye-catching as opposed to what Mr. Crass said, the Progress is Promised signs were kind of ignoring those like other roadway work signs at this like other roadway work signs at this point, and you did a good job with the color scheme and how they were laid out and the size. It really did catch your eye. Came around that way into the, the roundabout this weekend and saw it right away on Saturday. Looked good. Thank you. Last thing I'm going to leave everybody with is, again, I'm going to kind of piggyback off Sonya's comments. The Peace Officer Memorial Day and Police Officers Week kind of special to me as well, and both Chief Zimmerman and Chief Turnbow hate it when I remind them how long they've been in law enforcement, but I was looking at the officers here in the, the crowd tonight, and most of them very young. Please pass on an old adage from an old TV show. In the words of Phil Esterhaus, "Let's be very careful out there tonight."
Councilmember Morehead?
He keeps taking all the good stuff. I would have to say, in looking at all of this, I have to start with Public Works. Again, I, you know, when I, I live off a very busy street, and you'd be surprised how many times I'm hearing work trucks driving while I'm trying to go to bed, to note that these guys work 24/7, and, you know, when you think of what Public Works is, it's not just snow removal and curbs, but it's everything from our runoff water, our drinking water, our sewers, roads, curbs, sidewalks, grass, about everything. It, they truly are the foundation of our community, and I appreciate them. Our peace officers, I know that, you know, we talk about times of conflict, but I also know they offer a lot of wonderful non-conflict services to all our citizens and are appreciated for that as well. I did want to add, just on a little side note, you know, with Orshlin selling chicks and we're renaming that road, that really could be Urban Chicken Drive. So, Mr. Crass, if you'd kind of throw that on the, the list. So, thank you very much.
Councilmember Huback?
Nothing tonight.
Councilmember Kellard?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess I'd echo just about most of the stuff that's been said. Welcome, Mr. Heath. Thank you for your willingness to serve, and I'm sure you're going to enjoy what you're, you're in store for. It's exciting times, and I'm looking forward to working with you and seeing what, what you're able to do. I wish you well, and again, thank you. Also, I'd like to say thank you to Michelle, Michelle Seemers and Eric Eastwood, again, for serving, again. Michelle has been instrumental over the years in different, many different functions in the city. Her husband used to serve on the park board years ago, and they were both involved in Howl at the Moon 5K runs that we, we've had here in the past. She's, I, she, I'm very proud to have her serve and, and thank her for her service. Also, Mr. Eastwood, a lot of people may know, may not know, that he is responsible, I'll say this, I think he's responsible for the Disc Golf Course. Very strong proponent of it, not a proponent, but a supporter of it. He's the one that, that brought it to idea, and he's the one that's basically built the, the thing. So, thank him. I, I thank him personally. I used to work with him. He's since left the plant and has went to work at another place down the street from me, but it is an honor to work with such an intelligent individual. People don't realize that he's actually a doctor, you know? He is a rocket scientist. So, you can say that jokingly, but honestly, he, he's very intelligent, and I'm glad that he serves for us. Also, when, when I speak with staff, particularly Chief Zimmerman, Mr. Fearborn, and Mr. Crass, and anybody, you know, I usually don't say goodbye. I don't like saying goodbye, but when I, when I sign off on an email or something like that, or say, tell them, you know, that this conversation's ended, it usually ends with, "Stay safe." And I honestly, truly mean that, you know, and Mrs. Abdel Ghwad hit it right on the head. Not very many people have to show up to work with a bulletproof vest, and until you do, you just, I, I don't see how anybody can throw rocks at, at those, at those folks. I'm very appreciative that the, the proclamation also called out and spoke of the loved ones, the husbands, wives, and the families. One of my neighbors is a state patrolman, and he serves on the tactical unit for the State Highway Patrol, and he was right in the line of, of the, the firebombs being thrown in Ferguson. That's what he had to serve through. He did it willingly. He did it, you know, I won't say he did it happily, but he, he, he did his job, but I know his wife was down the street, and she was scared to death. So, that proclamation, I think, is, is well-written and speaks to the heart of the issue there. So, with all of that, Public Works, just as much, you know, and I'll never forget that it was your department that saved a life from being drowned. And I, you know, I, I sound like a broken record many times, but I can guarantee you that, that, that young individual and his family are very grateful for all the hard work and things that we don't think about that your employees did. They knew exactly where those manholes were at to fish that man out of those sewers. So, I appreciate it, and thank you.
Okay, as everybody has said, all the good stuff has been taken, except for the shred event. There is a shred event coming up on Saturday, the 16th, from 10 to 2:00 in the parking lot, so bring your stuff in and shred it. I don't think we have reason to go in executive session, do we?
No, sir.
Mr. Mayor, I move to adjourn the meeting.
Second.
There's a motion to adjourn in a second. All in favor? We are on adjournment. Thank you.